Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for September tenth, twenty twenty, to order at seven oh four P. M. On roll call, council members, Vazolo.
Here.
Golbeck, absent, Engley, Telegreen.
Here.
Wettler, Council President, Alice Jerry.
Here.
Mayor Coletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Welcome to all. We have a lot to do this evening, so let's get started. Whereas Chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now, therefore be advised that that meeting's requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in The Record and Herald News of Woodland Park, and by posting such notice in the office of the barrel clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January eighth, twenty twenty. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being videotaped, and will be available on the borough's website at www dot Elmwood Park NJ dot U.S. Erin, God bless you.
Please note that due to precautionary measures to help prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen, we have a conference call set up for the public to call as a means of participating in tonight's meeting. For the public's information and record, the public lines will be muted except for when we open up the meeting for the public hearing. We thank you in advance for your patience during the operation of the meeting.
May I have a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Come on.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard? Please state your name and address for the public record.
All participants are muted. All participants are unmuted.
Would anyone from the public like to speak at this time?
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
If no one else cares to speak, I will close the public portion. Ms. Lanny?
Okay, first on the agenda this evening, we had the fire department listed to present their five-year plan. Unfortunately, something came up, so we will need to reschedule them for our October work session. With that being said, the second item on the agenda is our fire prevention I S O rating presentation, and here with us this evening, we have our fire official, Steve Kochick.
Welcome, Steve.
Thanks. For those that are listening, he is setting up the presentation on the screen, and then he'll be behind the mic.
All right, John, for the public to aware, I want to pass it down to the mayor and council. I have a PowerPoint presentation for them just on what's going on here. Up on the screen here, you can see we recently had our I S O recertification. This started about a year and a half ago. What I S O is, is an insurance service office. It's a report that's done, usually do it every seven years. We came this year as a class four. We kind of stayed the same where we were from our previous class, same thing, it's a class four. A few things we're going to talk about tonight, what is I S O, what it is, how the evaluation process is, where we stand, where we stand amongst the country, how it's evaluated. There's a couple of different things that they look at, the emergency communication system, the fire department, the water supply divergence, which I'll get in a little bit farther, and then community risk reduction. What I'm also going to talk about is the changes that need to be done for us to move up to a higher class. Same thing, it's going to be with the emergency communications, fire department, water supply, and community risk reduction. And then we'll just talk about the plan on how we want to move forward and going for going forward, and if the mayor and council want to move forward and try to implement some of it to get a higher class. So, first thing we're going to talk about is what is I S O. I S O is an insurance rating certification that's public, that's public knowledge, and what happens is all the insurance companies that write fire insurance for homeowners, commercial business insurance, they look at this rating. The higher rating you have, the better rating you have, the lower the cost of the fire insurance for the residents and business owners in town. On the PowerPoint slide that I handed out, I go in a little bit more detail. I'm just going to kind of go through this so we don't waste too much time. There's ten different classes. Class one is the highest. Class ten is actually the worst, we're a class four, so we're kind of right there in the middle, teetering above average there. Discuss a little bit about that. What they, what's evaluated, the need for fire flow, what fire flow is, when there's a building on fire, there's actually a calculation to decide exactly how much water you need to put that fire out. Length times width, the square footage divided by the percentage of the building that's on fire would actually give you the amount of water that you need to put that fire out. The other thing that's evaluated is the emergency communication system, which includes emergency reporting, our dispatchers, and our dispatching system. The other thing is the fire department, just take a look at de-staffing, training, the geographical area, how many fire companies you have in town, and then they also look at community risk reduction. The last thing they look at is water supply, they look at what type of hydrants you have in town, how the water supply is actually doing, is it being maintained, stuff like that. Summary of where we stand, there's two different, there's a point system on this, so each category is awarded a maximum amount of points, and then those points added up would actually give you where we are, our P P C points, and that shows us where we're class four. So if you look in the right-hand column, you have the credits available, the maximum credits that can be awarded is a hundred and five point five. We are in sixty-five point eight three, and then you can see our highlighted area, we're between sixty point zero and sixty-nine point nine nine. We'll get in as we go, we'll do the breakdown and kind of show you where we stand, where everybody else is. Countrywide, you can, you can see right here, there's thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty departments that were evaluated nationwide. Right now, there's five thousand seven hundred departments better than us, there's six thousand nine hundred and twenty departments equal to us, and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-nine departments that are worse than us. So, we are, we are pretty good, you can kind of see class four, we're, we're, we're teetering on the better side. We're not that far off moving to a class three. If we make a whole bunch of adjustments, we can actually get down to a class three. And you can see nationwide where you'd be standing. So, next thing, what we did is on our evaluation, like I discussed before, communications, fire department, water supply, divergence, community risk reduction. So, under emergency communications, there's four different categories, it's emergency reporting, our telecommunications, and our dispatch circuit. And I get into each one of those individually, but you can see the credit available for this area was ten, we got a five point one. We're not doing bad, but there are, there is some room for improvement. First thing that they look at is our nine-one-one system. You can see right there, we've maxed out on our points there. Our wireless E nine-one, E nine-one-one system, later on, I'll explain exactly each section of it, but what we, what we use here is a static nine-one-one system, there's also a dynamic nine-one-one system. If we had both of those, we'd end up maxing out on points. On the static system, just to kind of give you an idea of what that is, you pick up your cell phone, you call nine-one-one, what happens is it pops up on the screen, your location. You walk three blocks down the road, they're not going to track you. We use dynamic, they'll be able to track your movement as you go along. Same thing with E nine-one voice over I P, that is basically your landline system. Our computer rated dispatch, at the time of review, we had a basic CAD, I know the chief has recently upgraded our CAD to enforces four, so we had the basic CAD and then the interoperability. The interoperability is where the CAD can actually communicate both sides to tablets in the vehicles, which the police side has. We can do that with the fire department side, but the, the, the cost for that is, doesn't equal out. The other thing is the computer, I'm sorry, computer rated dispatch to talk about, and then geographical locations. The next thing they talk about is the alarm receipt. Everything kind of refers back to N F P A, which is National Fire Protection Agency Association. This is, this refers to twelve-twenty-one, which basically breaks down everything to the national standard. Unfortunately, we received zero credit there. Same thing with our alarm processing, zero credit. Emergency dispatch protocols, zero credit. Telecommunication catering and certification, we received full credit there, and the continuing education and quality assurance. We only received ten points out of twenty. With a very minor change, we can actually increase that straight up to max credit, and I'll get into that later on. The third thing is our dispatch circuit. What this actually means is on our dispatch circuit, so any, we run, last year we ran four hundred and fifty-six calls. Once you run anything over seven hundred and thirty calls, you're supposed to have two dispatch circuits. The dispatch circuit is a means of notifying the fire department. So, we have one frequency, sends out a tone, everybody's aware of it. Once you hit seven thirty, you have to have a backup circuit. The other thing, what they're looking for is, how do you ever know if our repeaters go down or our communication system goes down? We really don't unless that dispatcher gets ready to hit the tone and realize that it's not going out, and nobody knows about this. That's where it's, the monitoring of the dispatch circuit comes in. So again, we got one point nine five out of three, we're really not sitting here at all. Next part is the fire department. Credit available for the fire department was fifty points, we ended up getting thirty point three-two. These are the different categories, and we're going to go right into these. So the first one is the engine company operation. What it says is based on your geographic area, it's going to tell you how many engine companies you're going to need in town, how many ladder companies you're going to need in town, and this is all stated through N F P A nineteen oh one, which is the standard of fire department apparatus. What they tell you is each engine that has a pump on, it's got to be able to have a capacity two hundred and fifty gallons per minute, at least a water tank of three hundred gallons, and then you're supposed to have one pump at seven hundred and fifty gallons capable of doing a hundred and fifty P S I. All of our fire apparatus extremely exceed that, most of them are twelve hundred fifty G P M pumps and higher. So, they recognize that we have three engine companies in service. N F P A states that each engine company is responsible for responding to one point five mile radiant circuits, that does the crow flies from the firehouse. So for the most part, the entire town is covered by one and a half where each firehouse is located. They also recognize that we have three engine companies, and we're able to.
To have, compete with our fire flow that we needed at three hundred G P M. They also say that we have three engine companies that respond to first alarm structure fires, at minimum you need two, so we, we beat the minimum by one. So you could see, we don't, we had, we were awarded five point six three points out of six, very minor changes, we're going to get right to that six. Engine one is ninety-nine point three percent equipped with materi, with the equipment that they need to get to that point. Engine two is ninety-one point six seven, and engine three is ninety point three three. What ended up hurting us here is our hose testing. Annually, we need to do hose testing, we've been doing it, the problem is, is they're looking at it, they want it done within a twelve-month period, so every twelve months it needs to be done. When you hit that thirteen month, you end up losing points. Reserve engine credit, what they say is, we're supposed to have one reserve engine for every eight engines that we have in town. At the point when we did this, we did not have the capability, or did we have a reserve engine? We actually do now, and we should be able to be awarded that point five because of the mini pumper. As long as we add the equipment to it correctly, what I S O is looking for, we'll be able to get the full credit and actually show that we have a reserve engine in town. Ladders, basically what they look for is ladder company, truck four obviously should be coming in very shortly. They look at how many buildings you have in town, the height of the buildings, anything over three stories, they're going to, they're looking for, you do have a ladder truck in town, reason being, because a ground ladder can only reach thirty-five feet. Commercial buildings, you're looking at fifteen feet between stories, residential, you're looking at twelve. This goes in just a little bit more, a little bit more detail about exactly what they're looking for. And then ladder trucks, the same thing, you have a two and a half mile spread because there are less ladder trucks, and we are covered by that. With the ladder that we currently have, we got a three point nine six out of four, missing very minor equipment. I know I've already had a conversation with the truck committee for the new truck, and moving forward, they already know what they're missing, so with the new truck coming in, we will be fully equipped. Credit for reserve ladders, I was able to get us point one out of point five. Reason being for that is actually rescue one. The way rescue one is equipped, rescue one has some tools on it that the ladder company's supposed to have, so we were able to get some points that way. Not much, but we got something. So then the deployment analysis, it's actually, it's a, it's a composition of everything, our fire, our, our response areas, the equipment, how the, how everything is equipped. If you have a hundred percent equipped, and you have a hundred percent coverage on your response areas, your deployment analysis also gets your max points. So we got a nine point five nine out of ten, so we're real close to getting to that ten. Credit for company personnel, we're hurting a little bit here on this. What they're looking for is how many personnel you have responding to alarms, to structure fires, stuff like that. What they don't look at, or what they do look at, I should say, chiefs responding don't actually count towards the credit unless you have two chiefs respond.
So we've got to get less chiefs.
More chiefs.
More chiefs. We need the.
More, more chiefs and a couple more Indians.
So what they're looking at is they recognize that is a full volunteer department, that there is no on-duty personnel, and the average response to a call is eighteen point five nine personnel. We were, we only received three point eight seven points out of fifteen. Fire department training credit, we received twenty-nine, we received two point eight out of nine points. We were awarded twenty-three, twenty-three point nine out of a hundred points. Here's the chart, you can, you can kind of see where, where we're deficient in. Use of training facilities, that's use of training academies, stuff like that, we should be sending members more to training facilities throughout the year. Company training, we got three point two eight out of twenty-five. What they're looking for is, they're looking for sixteen hours of training per month. We're close to that, again, it's a volunteer organization, and what they're looking for is, they're looking for sixteen hours of every member. That's very hard to do in a volunteer organization.
Steve, do these calculations, are they compared with a full-time fire department and, and volunteer?
Every volunteer goes to the exact same rating.
Volunteer.
Correct, volunteer and career. So, but they do take into consideration that you're a volunteer department.
They do.
So that, that's where you're never going to get, like on your response times and stuff like that, you're never going to get to a hundred, because your response time is three minutes, and a volunteer organization, you're never going to have that, because by the time the tones go out, members get to the firehouse, the rig gets out the door, you're over that, you're over that time span. Next thing they look at is the water supply system, the hydrants, and the flow testing of hydrants. Total credit available for this was forty, a credit earned on this was twenty-eight point four three. What we ended up doing is, we ended up going to, I believe it was twenty-two different locations throughout the town and doing flow testing on all the hydrants. Some of them we didn't get to, and what they ended up doing is, the last certification back in two thousand thirteen, we ended up having to use some of those numbers. I'm not going to get into this too much, if you guys want, let me know, and I can sit down individually and kind of explain this, this, this whole chart to you and how it all works. But again, we got twenty-three points out of thirty on this section. How do we improve on this? It's very simple, it's exactly what you guys are doing now, continue with the replacement of the water mains. Credit for inspection and flow testing, so there's actually a requirement for this, and this is the, in the A W W A M dash seventeen, which is the installation manual and field testing for fire hydrants. So what does this mean? They're actually looking to see, do we have a flushing program in town? We do have a flushing program in town. They're looking for, are the hydrants serviced, are the caps taken off, are the threads lubricated, are they painted as needed, are they serviced, and is the service documented? Are all hydrants pressure tested when they're flushed? I know we don't do that, that's something we could maybe move to in the future, talk to Scott, and come up with something there. The guys are already there, checking everything out, it's an extra thirty seconds. We have four hundred and sixty-eight hydrants within the borough, and the biggest thing is, they're looking for, to look at a piece of paper and say, what type of hydrant do you have where? You know, who's the manufacturer, when was it serviced, how was it serviced, and what's the main size? We do have a means of doing that. If you remember, two years ago, I ended up going and creating a hydrant map for the department. We don't utilize it that much, but I'd like to start getting towards this. What would happen is, if you can click on that, obviously we can't do it here, but on a regular computer, you can click on that hydrant, and we can pull up a data box, and we could actually enter that data box in there. I, I ended up giving this to Scott, I guess about six, eight months ago, I don't know, when he started his hydrant flushing, he was supposed to go and make sure that all the hydrants were kind of like right there, and if we missed any, we were going to add anything, but I haven't heard anything from him, so I'm assuming we're doing pretty good there. So, the divergence, what I was talking about, it's, it's actually a mathematical reduction between the fire department and the water supply. So what that means, the higher, the higher the score on the fire department, and the higher the score on the water supply, the less of the divergence, the smaller that number. So if the fire department has a lower score, and the water supply system has a lower score, that negative number is going to be a lot higher. So, we're not doing bad where we are. And I just ended up going through that and just explaining that to you. The last thing that they did in the assessment is the community risk reduction. This is the fire prevention side of it, so they look at the, the codes, the fire safety end of it, and the fire investigation program. Total points on this is five point five, we're at a four point seven. We do have some room for improvement here, and going through the program, you'll actually see where we can make some improvements on this as well. So the first thing here, what they look at is the fire prevention code. What they're looking for, obviously we got a ten out of ten, what they came in and they're looking for, to make sure that I'm enforcing the proper fire code and it's current. The next thing that they're looking at is the fire prevention staffing compared to what we have here. We got a six point four out of eight. They're actually saying that we should have more personnel in the department. Next thing they look at is fire prevention certification and training. They're looking for the highest level of training, the highest level of training is a fire official certification, we hired a fire inspector certification. If we raise up that minimum requirement, we'll raise up that number as well. Next thing they're looking at is the fire prevention programs and the evaluation program, and you can see we maxed out on points there. So, we, total points there is forty, we got thirty-six point four, so we're, we're doing pretty good there. Second portion of this is credit for public fire and safety education. We ended up, we didn't do so well here, we do have a lot of room for improvement, and I'll explain to you exactly where, where, where we're losing on here. What they're actually looking for is the educator qualifications and training. So we go out to the schools, and we do the fire prevention program every year. Any fireman, anybody like that can go and give a fire safety presentation. What they're actually looking for is the qualifications to see if you have an instructor certification, and you're able to actually get up and teach. Next thing we'll talk about is the changes that we, did I miss one? Yes, I did. Next thing that they looked for is the fire investigation organization of staffing. What this means is, they're looking to see if all building fires, structured fires are investigated, and I'm happy to say that, yes, we do, we do investigate and do an origin and cause, and determine if it's arson, if it's arson, we end up notifying the prosecutor's office, but we, we, we do investigate every fire. The next one down is the fire investigator certification and training. We got a three point three out of six. When this was done, not everybody in the office was certified to the fire investigator level, and there are C E Us in training with that, so obviously we do get the training points as well for that. The last thing they look at is the NIFR system, which is the National Fire Incident Reporting System. What this does is, every call that the fire department goes on, there, there's a, there's a fire report that's done for it, or an incident report, I should say, that's done for it. They all come through me, I review them, and then on a monthly basis, they get sent down to the state. That's how the state kind of tracks everything, especially on a structure fire, if we narrow it down to a dryer, we get make, model, serial number, stuff like that, that all gets put in there. So every month, products for consumer affairs, they take a look at these reports, and they say, hey, you know, X Y Z company, we had three fires with this type of dryer, let's put out a bulletin on this. Some changes that we got to, that we could make to increase in the emergency, we'll talk about in the emergency communications, fire department, water supply, and risk reduction. So I had mentioned a little bit in the beginning about the nine-one-one system, the static versus dynamic. If we were to also improve and go to the dynamic, we would end up maxing out on those points. That's something that the, that the chief and I would have to talk about and see what the cost analysis is, to move to that if it's worth doing it. Same thing with the voice over I P system. The other thing is, is the CAD management, I, I discussed, we received two-thirds credit on that. We can get full credit now with the new enforces four system. What that actually means is, what they're looking for is notification. So, for example, let's just say there's a structure fire that comes in, it's considered a call for service in the CAD. So the dispatcher will put it in as a call for service. When they go and enter that in there, what would happen is, you can set up call groups with cell phone numbers and stuff like that, so if you wanted to be notified that there's a structure fire, whatever, and you would get a text message, something that looks like that. Paramus Police, they actually use the enforces four. They have multiple things on the police side and the fire side. This is from their fire CAD, you can see they get their call number. The N R test is their nightly test, so every time they do a nightly test, this tech, this test page goes out. So what would it tell you, so where it says nightly test slash fire radio test, if it was a structure fire, it would say structure fire, it would give you the address, and then the units that were dispatched. That's an option that we have with the, with the, with the new CAD that the, the chief and I can talk about, getting that set up, if that's an option we want it to go to. The next thing to talk about is the alarm receipt, we received zero out of forty points. This is all as per N F P A twelve-twenty-one. What this actually means is, ninety-five percent of the calls need to be answered within fifteen seconds, not, not just, I'm sorry, not just answered, but entered into the system within fifteen seconds. So from the minute they pick up that phone, the time starts. It's got to be put into the computer within forty seconds of them answering that phone. It's a very tight timeframe, and when it gets very busy, that's, that's very, that's very tough to reach. Especially if you call and say, hey, my house is on fire, they got a whole bunch of stuff to do, and on top of getting that in, within a hundred and six seconds, they have to get the fire department dispatched. It's a very, it's a very tough timeframe to do a lot of that stuff, and especially with the minimum, the, the light manpower and stuff like that, it's very hard to do. The other thing is the emergency dispatch protocols, zero out of twenty. What this is, this is basically kind of the same thing as on the EMS side, when you call nine-one-one, and you say, hey, I'm not feeling well, they pull up that card, or they say, hey, I'm having a heart attack, they pull up that heart attack card, and there's a whole bunch, a list of instructions on what the dispatcher's supposed to do. They have that for fire, too. That's something, what it looks like. If you call up and say, my house is on fire, they're going to ask you, do you see flames or smoke? And then it gives you the next question, is it a building, what type of building, is it a garage, is it a detached garage? How many stories is it? And this is all information that can be passed down upon dispatch. And then same thing, it just, it just, it's just a complete follow straight through, that once everything's dispatched, the dispatcher will stay on the line, you know, if they can't get them to safety, kind of, if they can't get out, get them to a safe point, and kind of give them a whole rundown of everything. The last thing was the telecommunicator education and quality assurance, we received ten out of twenty. This is actually a very simple correction. What they're actually looking for is, I know the chief has got a very good quality assurance program, but what they're looking for on here is, this is more of a two dispatcher type of thing. So if you're the dispatcher and you put the call in, there's a second dispatcher that goes in and reviews all that information right then and there to make sure everything's correct. That's where the quality assurance on that comes from. The dispatch circuits, to obtain full credit, the dispatch center needs, needs to monitor certain things twenty-four seven. What that means is, they're, they're looking for the power supply to the building. We have a generator on the building, the generator would have a control panel on it that, that tells you whether it's in emergency mode, if it's in street power mode, if for some reason there's a fault on it and it won't start, they're looking for that panel to actually physically be in the dispatch center, to be able to be monitored twenty-four Fire department wise, engine and truck company, to get that, to get up to that hundred percent with them, engine one needs a hose clamp, engine two needs three years of hose testing records, that's all they actually need. We had one year, the problem is, is records were all mismanaged and stuff like that, and there was nothing that was able to be produced, so unfortunately, with nothing able to be produced. So unfortunately, with nothing able to be produced, obviously, we're not going to make anything up. Same thing with Engine 3, and then they're just missing a few salvage covers and a hose clamp. Truck 4, the only thing that they were missing was two salvage covers. What a salvage cover is, is in the event of a fire, it's basically a tarp, pretty much. So what will happen is if you have a fire on the second floor, we're going to come in and we're going to put a tarp over your couch, you got pictures on the wall, we're going to try to take those pictures down, cover them in that tarp, and try to save them for you, so they don't get ruined. We ended up talking about the extra credit for the mini pumper. One of the biggest expenses for that mini pumper would be, in order for it to classify as another engine, it needs to have a 1,000 GPM ground-based monitor, which that means is it's able to produce, able to flow 1,000 GPM per minute on that. And then doing that, doing all of this would actually increase our deployment analysis, is what I kind of talked about before, with the fire department and the water supply and stuff like that. So, personnel, obviously, we talked about before, that we receive 3.87 out of 15. Right now, we're a 78-man department, 59 are active firefighters, 10 are junior firefighters, and nine are non-certified probationary firefighters. So what happens is when they're going through and they're looking at our certification, they're not looking, they're looking at the total number of firefighters, which is 78, that's on our rolls. They're not looking to see who's certified, who's not certified, who's a junior. If you're on the department, you count throughout. That's where the numbers, it's kind of a numbers game here. So what they're actually showing is we have a 23% fire department response on a call, with that number of 18.59. Training is where we have a big, serious issue with. Facility use training, we talked about before, we got 0 out of 35 points. What they're looking for is 18 hours of training at an academy a year. There is a way around that, there's a couple different things you can do. You can do one hour of academy training, and then the rest of which is in-house training, training at a facility that's at least three stories in height. So if you go and do a walkthrough of, let's just say, 475 Market Street, that's a three-story building there, that could actually count towards training. And that's doing a walkthrough and kind of pre-planning at the same time, and seeing, God, but there is a fire, what's our hose stretch? How much hose do we need? Stuff like that. What's our maneuverability? How is the layout of the floor? Stuff like that. Company training, that was the same thing I talked about before. They're looking for 16 hours a month. Again, that's something very hard, and that's 16 hours per person, so it's very hard to get in a volunteer organization.
But if you have a meeting, you know, each fire department has a meeting, can't you consider that, some of that meeting as training, you talk about a training at the meeting, too, and has the fire there? So this way, with subsidizing, you know, that's all.
A meeting training is considered like an administrative training, which I'm going to get into right now, and officer training, no problem. But in the company-level training, that's the actual firefighter training. They're looking for that physical, hands-on training. Now, the officer training, officers are required to have 12 hours of training a year, under a different standard, which is 1021. Out of those 12 hours, six of those hours can come from officer meetings. So if you've got 12 meetings a year, you can count one hour from six meetings as training. The rest of it has got to be some type of class, whether it's an online class, whether it's an academy class, something towards officer development. The other thing that we heard on is new driver qualifications. What they're looking for in this program is a lot. Not many, the only way you can accomplish this is in a career department. You'd never be able to accomplish this in a volunteer organization. But can we work towards that? Sure, we could work towards that, make changes, and get some credit compared to getting zero credit. What they're looking for is 60 hours of initial training. That's crazy. 24 of which is actually a pump operator class, which would be at the academy, and then 12 hours of CVO, which all of our drivers get anyway, it's a coach vehicle emergency operator course. It kind of teaches you the proper way of driving in an emergency situation with lights and sirens on. And then they're looking for 24 hours of behind-the-wheel training. It is a lot. That is very hard to come by, but adapting that and adding to it and developing something is better than not having anything at all. And then our existing driver training, here's the thing, we do this every year, all of our current drivers get that 12 hours of reoccurring training. The thing is, is it's not documented. Documenting it will get us the credit. Hazmat training, you're looking for .5 out of 1, I'm sorry, you're looking, credit for 1 was given for firefighters needing six hours of hazmat training a year. That can be incorporated into a company drill. Again, we got half credit for it, we're not far, very simple minor adjustment in the training procedures, and you're going to get full credit for it. Reoccurring training, sorry, recruit training, we get 3.88. What they're looking for is when a new member joins the fire department, usually in a volunteer organization, we kind of hold off a few months, six months, so to say, to see if they're interested, so we don't spend the money to send them to fire school. The problem is with this is they're looking for that person to be fully trained within one year of appointment. The catch is with that is fire school is now 10 months, and they're going to be adding more to it. So again, moving a little bit, maybe, you know, maybe we revamp some type of process. There's not much credit that's lost here, but is there room for improvement? Sure, there's room for, there's always room for improvement. Pre-planning, this was kind of big, what we have, we actually have pre-planned software right now, it's actually driven off my inspection software. So all my information that's in my inspection software, property owner information, business information, emergency contact, type of alarm system, sprinkler systems, all that's in my system, and there's a pre-planned software that we have, that I have since purchased for the fire department, and they're actually able to see that on the road as well. We got 9 out of 12. This system is fairly new, so what they're also looking for is an annual, where we lost the four points, actually, was from, because on the software, I don't have sketches of So, 2.8 out of 9, you can definitely see where we've got some improvement to do there. On the water supply system, 23 out of, 2308 out of 30, not bad. Again, just replacing the water mains will increase that number over time. The inspection and flow testing, 2.4 out of 7. That 2.4 comes from the hydrant flushing program that we have. What we can do, we got to start, if we start documenting the flushing, the pressure testing when the hydrants are flushed, and that's just as simple as putting a gauge on, opening it up, and actually taking a reading of the pressure, and just basically keeping a full documentation of everything would end up increasing right to max points, if not max points. Fire prevention staffing, 6.4 out of 8. Only way to increase that is the increased numbers of part-timers or go to full-time. Fire prevention certification and training, 4.6. I kind of touched on that before, they're looking on the education side of it, who's got what. The public safety qualifications, same thing. We currently have two fire instructors on staff. If everybody was a fire instructor, we would end up getting 10 points on that in the public education side of it. Fire safety education, 15.25 out of 30. Pretty much right now, the only thing we really do is Fire Prevention Week, and we go, reach out to pre-K through third grade. I know Councilwoman, you'd reach out to me, I think it was last year, at the homeowners' association, that's what they're looking for. They're looking for us to get out more with that, get out into the community, promote it more in the community, especially on large dollar loss stuff, large dollar loss businesses. We got a couple, we got, obviously, Markow, we got custom chemical, stuff like that. Get it, get out there, promote the fire safety, give them fire extinguisher training, stuff like that, you know, go out there and work with them, conduct fire drills with them, reevaluate. And they do that, but what they're looking for is us to get out there and evaluate that and do that with them, and kind of give them, you know, they've got their way of doing it, let's go out there and evaluate it and say, hey, you know, maybe if you do this, it'll work out better for you. So again, 4.7 out of 5.5, not bad. The last two things we'll talk about is the plan and then the roadmap, if you guys so choose, within the next two to three years, we could actually call for a recertification. We don't have to wait for the full seven years. Cost, yes. Is there going to be a cost involved? Sure, there's going to be a cost involved in some of this stuff. Some of the stuff, no, there's not going to be a costed. The implementation process, what's the benefit for it? The benefit with this is, you know, our residents, our business owners, cheaper fire insurance for them. The other thing is, is once we do this, we got to get out there and we got to promote it into the community, however it may be, you know, social media, stuff like that. My overall plan on this, with hopefully your backing, is right here, the third quarter of 2020, giving you guys the presentation. I was supposed to meet with the fire chiefs last week, there was some scheduling conflicts, we weren't able to meet, so we're actually meeting on Monday, and they're going to see this on Monday as well. What I'm looking for in the fourth quarter of 2020, to prepare and start implementing the procedures, hopefully by the first quarter of next year, get the, be in the full swing of this, and then the second quarter of next year, kind of reevaluate, make any changes, tweak anything around that we need to, continuing along, same thing in the fourth quarter of '21, so we've got, we're working through the entire year of 2021, and then in the second quarter of 2022, make the phone call for ISO and say, hey, look, you know, we want to, we've made these changes, I think we're ready to increase and drop our class rating, let's start the process again, and then hopefully by the end of '22, to actually get either a Class 3 or better with any implemented changes. That's all I got. Anybody got any questions?
No, but that was awesome. Very, very good.
You got it?
I have a question.
Sure.
Were we ever a 3 or lower?
To the best of my knowledge, we've always been a 4. But again, you can see, we're not that far off from a 3.
And maybe when things open up again, we can have the Chamber of Commerce invite the businesses to come here, maybe you can give them.
Yes, absolutely.
Because then that will count for credit.
Correct.
And that would be helpful to them, too. They'll learn something, too.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Steve, as far as the training, has it been better in the past, that we're lacking it now? It seems like that's a big part of this.
From what I'm seeing, there has been, there has been academy training in the past, and it's kind of, you know, last year was an off year for us, we all know. This year, the same thing, we had a bit of an off year, but moving forward, I think we got to get back on track with that.
I think with the acquisition of Power DMS and the accreditation process, you're going to see the training spike.
Yeah, and even meeting, you know, our first meeting went very well. The Power DMS, the chief ended up getting for us, it's an excellent program. A lot of stuff can be tracked by this, policies, procedures, training as well, certifications as well, stuff like that. I think the whole accreditation process is going to address a lot of this.
Steve, you have the DPW, I know Scott will do, he goes out with his, you know, fire hydrants, I know, he can have a scotch.
Yeah, and again, it's very.
It'll take him two minutes more while we're out there doing it, and that will save you a lot of time.
Yeah.
Give that up, you know, host it up, too.
That's why I think, you know, sitting down with Scott and just, if everything's on a spreadsheet, and he hands the guys that spreadsheet, and check, 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 you put it in a file, and that's what they're looking for, so when they come, you can go, here's the paper.
They're going to do it anyway, so two extra seconds to do anything, it's not going to hurt, you know.
And again, that's something that doesn't have to be done twice a year, once a year. We do the hydrant flushing twice a year. So we document that hydrant flushing twice a year, we do a pressure test once a year, and let's just say on the other side, you know, we document the maintenance, so maybe that time, hey, it needs to be painted, they paint it real quick, and you're done. It's all documented.
The guys are out there doing it, so it's not that taking to do something else, you're doing it, you're ready, so one extra step.
Right.
Any other questions for Steve? Steve, I have a question.
Sure.
First of all, excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Very well done. How many points will you get if Sal and I enlist?
How many calls will you respond to?
Minus?
Just by me listening, they're going to lose points, because I will not be able to go through the course of being a firefighter. I would never fulfill the requirement.
Sure you can, sure you can. All right, Steve, yeah, good, wanted to say.
No, I was actually just going to say, age, there is no factor with this. I'll be honest with you, the first time I went through fire school, I went through, there was a guy in my class that was 65 years old, so nobody can ever say they can't do it.
Okay, but the only difference is that Sal and I would need a horse-drawn wagon.
Sorry, those are obsolete.
I mean, we're familiar with that, you know, we can hook them up, right, right, Sal?
That's right, and I could be pumping.
And then if you guys want to read through this more, what I can do is I could email you guys the PDF version, so you could actually read it in bigger print than what's on this paper.
Yeah, it was a little difficult to read.
Yeah. You got it, I'll send that to you tomorrow.
Thank you, Stephen.
You got it.
Thank you, Stephen. Moving along, ladies and gentlemen, we have professionals here this evening that are going to partake in our executive meeting, rather than to keep him here for another hour or so, I'm going to move to go into executive meeting. So, motion?
No. Second.
All in favor?
Where is the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss litigation, minutes will be kept, and ones the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting. For those that are listening in, we apologize for this inconvenience. It is currently 7:49. We ask that you call back using the same line and access code at about 8:30, and we'll update you if you need more time. Hopefully, we won't. Again, 8:30, if you don't mind calling back, and we'll resume the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Well, welcome. Familiar faces here. Everybody's smiling, which is a good start. So we have some discussion?
So, I'm going to turn it over to Mary and Frank to address the.
I'm calling Dan, and that's not paused, so.
Good night.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, I need to pause. Thank you.
Mary, you want to speak?
Just okay.
Oh, you mean to replace him? Okay, yeah, so it's, I guess it's.
Mayor Ron.
Okay, all right. Welcome back, can I say that?
Yeah.
Well, welcome back. Sorry about the delay, but it took a lot of time to resolve some situations, and we are back. And where are we?
Welcome, and thank you for choosing FreeConferenceCall.com.
My pleasure.
Helping people around the.
Is that a commercial?
Are the hosts, press star now. Please enter your PIN, follow. Your input is invalid. You entered 5, 4, 6. Please enter your PIN. Thank you. There are two participants in the conference. Please announce yourself.
Welcome back, sorry for the delay, but we're ready to proceed. Erin, where are we?
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
Okay, we are reconvening the meeting at 9:00 PM to reestablish quorum. Councilmembers Fasolo.
Here.
Golebeck, Abson, Engley.
Here.
Pellegrini.
Here.
Wetchler.
Here.
Council President Balistrari.
Here.
Mayor Colletti.
Here.
We have a quorum. Again, thank you, everyone, for your patience this evening. We are now proceeding with the rest of the agenda. First on is number three, correspondence, so just as an FYI notification, from New Jersey Transit regarding a public hearing, so if anyone's interested in participating from the governing body, they have the information to get onto Teams right on that notice for you. Now for resolutions, the first one we have is for A, road opening performance bonds, so there are two that would be on the agenda. They have been reviewed and recommended by our DPW superintendent to be released based on his inspection, so as long as there's no concerns or questions, that will be on the agenda for next week. For B is the Bergen County Community Development Regional Committee, so this is the committee that meets with municipalities for the community development block grants currently, it is Councilman Golebeck and myself, so that's who meets and discusses our grant applications and how the money should be divvied up. It's been both he and I for 2019 and 2020, so this would be for the next round through 2021, and then it would be Mayor Colletti and the BA Philigno as our alternates if we can't make it, as long as everyone's in agreement.
Counsel, it seems to be working. The old adage, if it isn't broke, don't fix it. I feel we should keep the two members as our representatives for this, this committee. Any discussion on that? Anyone care to wallen agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, for C is a shared service proposal for the repairs of burrow vehicles with the burrow peramus. I know the BA could speak more about that, but if it's something internally that we can't fix with our burrow vehicles with the DPW, it would be a shared service with the burrow peramus, should they have the equipment to make the fix.
Mike, that's it.
Perfectly, it's a shared service. We don't have to use them, it's just another alternative if we need repairs. They're well-equipped and they work on emergency vehicles. We don't have to get quotes and all that stuff, everything is, is in place already.
And they're pretty reasonable with the.
Very good rates, yes.
Okay. So that gives you like two options then?
Yes.
Very good. Yep.
Okay, for D is the Acadia Realty Service Contract in regards to providing security at their location on Broadway with the police department.
Standard operating procedure, Mayor, we sign a yearly contract with the mall, Acadia Realty, to provide security there from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM every night.
And they pay us for that, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Very good.
Okay, for E is the South Bergen Jiff bylaw amendment. On April 15th, the Jiff had a public hearing in regards to their bylaw amendment, mainly because a third party is now participating, so they need all of their municipalities to adopt the resolution accepting the bylaw amendment.
Any problems with that, Counsel?
No.
Moving along.
For F is a fire department volunteer. Any questions? Okay. For G and H are in regards to fencing. The first is for Rosemont Park fencing, and the second is for Cherry Hill fencing. We did receive the three quotes. Finance is waiting on the pay-to-play paperwork to be submitted, also in front of you, just for your information, is information on what's been spent so far on the bonds regarding both projects, and how much is left on the bonds, which is a significant amount, so we are in good financial standing. And, you know, we're going with the recommendation of our acting rec director at the moment. The one park will have the same fencing that's currently there around the playground for around the parking lot, and then the other one will match the current fencing at our other parks. Okay, and lastly, there's no backup, but 2020, 2021 liquor license renewal, this is something that we do with all of our liquor licenses typically in June. However, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, liquor licenses were extended through September 30th, so we need to pass a resolution confirming those renewals for our liquor licenses that have completed the applications and paid the municipal fee. Okay, moving along to item number five, applications. There is a St. Leo's Church raffle scheduled for November 15th. That needs your approval, so that will be on the agenda as well. And then lastly, moving on to departmental reports. First, we have the August 2020 Building Department Report, which is also submitted via email to everyone. Any questions? Okay, Millennium Strategies is the next departmental report, and it's their grant status and through August 2020, so what applications they've applied for, been successful in and not, and have been denied. Six C is our finance report through August 31st, so it's the financial standings for all of our departments for your review. Any questions on that? Okay, moving right along, six D are Board of Health minutes that need to be accepted and approved for February and March 2020. All right, if there's no questions, that's all I have, Mayor.
Committee reports, Mr. Fasolo.
Progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Golebeck isn't here. Mrs. Ingui.
I actually, I don't have any report, I just wanted to, if I can just state one thing.
Absolutely.
Next Tuesday, I, now that I know it's also the chief's birthday, happy birthday, chief, but we are having our 2020 Where Is Beautiful virtual event, so we don't want to forget about the kids in 2020, just because COVID happened, there was still a lot of cancer happening, so we are going virtual, online. I know a lot of residents follow that, and you can do so, Facebook Live, online. We plan on giving away a lot of monetary funds to a lot of sick children, so I just wanted to put that out there to the residents. We'll also have cake for Mike Philigno's birthday. Thank you.
Mrs. Pellegrini.
Yes, just real quick, the next Board of Health meeting will be this Monday, September 14th at 7:00 PM, and the Elmwood Park Board of Health will be having a free flu clinic for our Elmwood Park residents. The date is September 17th, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Location, the ambulance court building, 236 Valmath Ave, Elmwood Park. Please call 551-246-5423 to register. Walk-ins are also welcome. If you have any questions, you can call 201-796-1457, extension 604, and speak to the Board of Health Secretary, Marlene DiStefano, for any questions.
Thank you, all right. Mrs. Wettler.
Progress.
Mrs. Balistreri.
Progress.
Wow, very good. I'll keep mine real short, something that we probably all know by now, but in case you don't, it's good to see the schools have reopened to some degree. We're waiting for the pavement to cure at the tennis court, so that we can put the final dressing on, on the court and put that away, put that to bed, that problem. And also, I'd like to remind you that tomorrow evening, 9/11 ceremony at the Fireman's Memorial will take place at 7:00 PM, that's on Molnar Drive, and naturally Elmwood Park. That's, that's all I have for the moment.
What about the library? Did you want to explain that? If everything's going all right, okay.
The library, we, Councilwoman Wettler wants, has asked a question about the library. Basically, we are in the same position we were last week. We've made two calls. They, they transpired between the architect and our building department, and we're waiting for a response from the architect or the builder. Would you like to add to that, Mike? Is there anything that I covered all?
No, other than I had the building department again follow up with them today to make sure that they understand the ball's in their court. The burrow has done everything it possibly can to get this job to continue to move on. Unfortunately, it's on the architect for the, for the job.
Yeah, in case some of you online didn't catch what Mike said, that we've done everything we possibly can to, to bring this to a close quick, very quickly. So, is that okay? Dorsha, any further explanation?
After having returned any of your phone calls, that's a shame, but I'll get on it tomorrow morning and find out why.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I guess we're finished with our reports, then we can have a motion to open the floor to the public.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone care to speak?
All participants are muted. All participants are unmuted.
Would anyone from the public like to speak at this time? Please state your name and address for the public's record.
Jeffrey Frytag, 35, Hillman Drive, Elmwood Park. Just one question. Prior to executive session, when you went into that, what was the reason for it? I don't recall it being stated.
I stated litigation.
Anything else, Jeff?
No, it was just quite long. I was, what, were there lawyers, or?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else care to speak?
Hi, this is Dominic Scalci.
How are you, Dominic?
Good, Mayor, how are you this evening?
Good, 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 very good. I'm in good company.
I, on the, at the meeting on August 13th, I believe it was August 13th, I mentioned about the missing fence at the southeast corner of English Avenue Park, and I'm pleased to report, I think I've reported before, that within days that piece of fence was installed, but it looks like it was installed inside out, and I'm just wondering why they would do that. There's about a thousand feet of fence, and it's all good side facing in, and they, I don't know why they would take that 80-foot of, a piece of fence and, and put the good side out, you know, just facing the stream. So I was just wondering why they did it that way. Was there some problem with the contract, or it was just a mistake, or, I don't know if it's important, but it is facing out, whereas all the rest of the fence is facing in. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we will take a looksee and see exactly what you're talking about. What he's.
Yeah, so.
Dominic, just so, just so I understand clearly, three-quarters of the fencing on the property, the finished side is facing the, the neighbors or in?
It is a thousand feet of fence, it's all facing in, and just that 80 feet that they just put in is facing out. It's just weird, you know, you can see it right next to each other that they would do it that way. Just, just strange, that's all.
What the, what the chief is saying, that he feels the requirement would be that it has to face out, all of it.
Yeah, but all of the thousand feet is, is facing in, so.
Right.
You know, you would just follow the pattern of whatever was there already, I would think, you know.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take a looksee, Dominic, and.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have a report for you at our next meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, our pleasure. Anyone else care to speak? If not, I will close the public portion. Okay, we're going to move on to, back into executive.
And they can unmute themselves.
Motion to back into executive? Second? Fasolo? All in favor?
Okay, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss